By a stand. And we'll do a pledge. Our Father in heaven, thank you for this wonderful day and this great country you've given us to live in. But thank you for allowing us to govern ourselves, help us to make the best decisions we can possibly make for our community. And consider what you would want us to do. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Texas flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
May be seated. I call a January twenty twenty-five meeting of the Milford City Council of Orders, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Six P M. I declare that all the notices legally posted according to the Open Meetings Act and if one is present, all council members are present. Do we have anybody who wants to address us to open my session? Okay. We go to the consent agenda then. Consider that. Any questions or motions, discussion?
I move that we consent on the agenda from last month.
I accept it.
Any discussion? God will proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is adopted. Department of Labor reports. Mr. Washington is not present. And Mr. Rod is also not present tonight, so we'll go to Fire Department. It's a slow month, actually, last month. We only got nine calls before change. Everybody was peaceful.
That's good.
Didn't need us. Again, on the twenty-first of this month, the county commissioners' board is meeting to approve everything, validate everything, and then put put on the May election for us to begin the D S D.
Next Tuesday, right?
Twenty-third. At two P M.
Oh, at two?
Yeah.
The fire on the day after Christmas, where was that?
I've got no idea. Do you?
I don't know where.
I have no idea, man. I really have no idea.
Uh, happened out on.
My house.
Everything okay?
You what?
Did you burn the battery?
No.
Well, now.
Yeah, it really was.
Is it the first time you had used that fireplace? Is that the first time you had used that fireplace?
Oh, no, no. That's probably the problem. That thing gets used all the time.
Okay.
And it was the, basically, got to one on the inside and burned the inside wall.
Wow.
If nothing further, we'll go to the police department report.
You have the activity report in front of you, the breakdown and then the individual calls as well. The only other thing is Officer Guerrero has completed the F T O phase. He is out. He's working. He's currently working the same shift that I am, so that if he does have any questions, somebody's there. And we're fixing to see who wants to go to actually take a day shift and be a different shift than me. Whether it's one of the senior guys or whether it's him, that whoever wants to go to days, and then they'll start giving us better coverage on the weekends.
And when might that decision be made?
That decision will be made, hopefully, we're having a department meeting on Thursday evening. And next, the Monday following that, because that way it won't be any overtime. It won't be any switching of hours to anybody, because his pay, work week starts on Monday, so everybody else's work week, it should mean change of shift. Everything else is fine.
What's wrong with that police car?
The top radiator hose is busted, apparently. I can't get over there, went over there today to see if I could see it, obviously. But it's too cold to start getting metal tools and taking the cover off just to see if the hose is actually there or if it just busted. But it's something that, if that is correct, the officer says, it's just a quick fix, and there's no sense in taking that service for a week to send it back to the management here.
Yeah.
It was just to go to the auto parts store and pick up a hose and undo it in the middle of the weekend, but.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
I have a question. So, my place was broken into. And over a thousand dollars was stolen, flooring, that type of stuff. And had an officer come over from Italy, take the report. And since then, I got none, not one word from anybody. And just trying to figure out how that slips through the cracks.
I haven't received anything from Italy.
Well, obviously, then there's some kind of an issue with how we're doing our back and forth between y'all and them. So, I need to, I guess, get with you after the meeting. I don't want to take up too much of the meeting time, but for that kind of a thing to happen that close to the front of where our town is and to have it go completely without anything done, it's a little frustrating. And I think we need to address that at some point.
Oh, is it being, so happened?
Uh, I think that it happened on New Year's Day. I reported it last week. Some point, I don't know, when I got back and found it all going, so. Anyway, I don't, like I said, I don't want to take up the city's time, but we can discuss it later.
Okay. Anything else? Please depart. Okay, we'll go to number five then and take that up, discuss impossible action to allow the Milford F F A to build a free pantry and library for the community. Who wants to speak to that? See three of you here.
I'll speak first.
Okay.
But all three of us are going to be speaking.
Go ahead.
We're going to pass out our program.
Okay.
Thank you, man.
You go ahead and identify yourself. We're recording all this.
Okay. My name is Seth Martin. I am an officer for the Milford Deputy Chapter. And these are my fellow officers here.
I'm Taylor Bancroft.
I'm Taylor Wallace.
And we are proposing the idea of building a tiny library and canned food pantry to you guys. So, our goals for this project, we only have four of them, are to support those in Milford who are in need. There are many individuals in Milford that don't have the consistent access to food, as they should. And we also want to establish a tiny, tiny library to improve access to books and promote literacy within Milford. Our third goal is to provide an ongoing community service that the F B A group can contribute to annually. And our fourth goal is to select the most accessible places within Milford where everyone has a chance to use these resources.
The project impact is addressing food insecurity. Texas has an average food insecurity rate of thirteen point seven percent. Thirty-two percent higher than the national average, and this project is to just try to lower that in, like, Milford. And promoting literacy, the tiny library will offer books to, like, improve, improve literacy in the act media.
Our steps for the project, one, we would like to find a place, so we have the, we would like to ask if the park by, like, the trees, if you look towards, like, the last page, you'll see it, there's a, or the, oh, the second page.
This is the second.
It's one spot by the tree outside by the park. It's just a general area for everybody to come. And then we would construct it for the, for various age groups with the books. It'd probably be like a section, be like, this is these age groups, this is the age group. So, everybody has a chance to have a book for themselves. We also recruit other F F A members to maintain these stations, so we'd like restock goods and managing the library. We also, like, if people of the community of their own would like to restock and help, that'd also be completely up for that. Um, we have, like, regular access to, so we can ensure the success of it.
Okay. So, she was talking about the location choices. We have three main ones. Our first one is going to be on the corner by the park at South Main Street and College Street. Our second choice is also going to be at the park, but this one's going to be on the corner of South Main Street and Border Street. Our last option is the police station between, on the corner of South Main Street and East Crossman.
Our location reasoning is we select these locations because they are the most, among the most popular and accessible central areas in Milford. Ensuring that there's easy access for everyone in a, in a broad range of, for a broad range of people. Um, these were strategically located near key landmarks which draw significant foot traffic. And come, can they directly to the community. By choosing these areas, we aim to minimize their positive impact and provide a meaningful benefit to residents of Milford.
And the design plans, they're in front of you. Those are what we, like, we plan to do for the tiny library and the free pantry, so.
They also double, so like, it'd be, this is just one design, we double the design that's on here, so it'd be like one for the food pantry and one for the books.
Oh, one for each.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they'd be like right next to each other, so it's right there.
That's all we have for you guys tonight.
Any questions?
Are y'all gonna, who's going to furnish the books for this? Is this just going to be donated books from the public, or is this something that y'all will arrange for?
Well, we were planning on starting out, and I was personally going to give a few books, and then after that, it's going to be like, take a book, leave a book kind of thing, you know? So, that there'll always be a new supply.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Is this going to be a permanent pantry? I mean, is it going to sit there all the time, or do you?
It's going to be a permanent installation.
That's what I thought. Okay. I'm just curious about whether it's going to be locked and all those kinds of things.
So, it, it would be the same thing with, like, the library and the little pantry. It would be a put and take, so there's going to be a door that goes on it. But the idea is for anybody who needs something at any point, it should have twenty-four hour access.
I've seen those in nature.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
And I can also help donate canned goods and stuff like that.
At any point you guys can give to us and see, um, what y'all would like to donate, we'd be happy to.
What is your timeline for opening up the, the, the library and the pantry? What's your timeline for actually completing the building, the construction? And making it available to the community? What's the timeline?
By, by the end of the school year would be the hope, because the kids are going to build it in the school, like, the shop kids are going to build. We have some kids that are from a shop, but also F F A members that are going to build it. When we have some spare time in class and some other time as well, and then they'll come on their own time to install, because it would be concreted into.
So, tell me, tell us about your, um, your public awareness and publicity pain, plan.
Um, I am the reporter for Milford F F A. I run some of our accounts. So, I would, um, like to post stuff about it just to make sure that people are aware. And they are, like, pretty decent size, and I'm sure that we can have people to, like, communicate and tell everyone about it.
We are also going to put it in the school announcements so that everyone is aware of it. And if we can, like, outreach to the church possibly, that would be amazing, you know? Any other questions?
They should be pretty, or weather sturdy.
Weather sturdy, we're sure to make sure.
Yes, sir.
In terms of your, your goals, do you have a certain number of cans that you would like to have when you donated? When you first get started, do you have a certain number of books that you would like to have when you open up to the public?
Not as of now. We don't have a set minimum. We just want to first see how much we can possibly get and just put all we have in there, you know?
What were you all studying when you all came up with this, the notion of making this, uh, this pantry and this library? What was your course of study? What were y'all studying that made you all say, wait, wait a minute? Why don't we consider a library and a pantry? I, I just wonder, what, what was the focus of study?
Uh, we weren't studying anything. We just thought it'd be like, it'd be better for the community as a whole.
Other than that, you all, you thought about it maybe like when you were in the cafeteria and y'all were just having, you know, a conversation? I mean, that's a great thing. I just wondered.
I, I noticed, um, that the church, that there's churches that do, like, their own meeting, like, as you just come and donate food drives. So, we just thought that sometimes that space is kind of big, so this is like an in-between time, you know? And then literally, we're trying to show that, um, for like a love of books and that everyone can, like, enjoy reading.
It's impressive.
Well, you have somebody coming back periodically to check on the condition of the books that are being left or making sure that everything is intact and not abused or.
Yes, ma'am. We all regularly monitor it.
Yeah. And what about the food items? Is it just going to be strictly canned goods or?
Non-perishables. It's just going to be non-perishables.
Okay, like, well, certain things like, yeah, like a bag of macaroni or a box of macaroni or kentle beans or something like that. There's got to be a pretty quick turnover because insects can get into that.
Yes, ma'am. Mostly canned.
Yeah.
It's mainly canned.
That's why we're going to monitor, as well.
How frequently will you monitor?
Uh, as of now, probably about bi-weekly is when we'll go and check on it. But just as often as we can, really. We still have to sort that out with the other groups.
Most of our members live here, too, so it's probably really easy for us to, like, grab the access to.
But we need to organize an actual time.
Right, organize a monitoring, you know, put together a monitoring plan, because it is an honor system, and we would like to think that we're all uh, community members of honor, but we know that's not the case, because in the macro culture, that's not the case. So, Milford is no different. So, that frequent monitoring, just to make certain that the goals that you have outlined, that we, that you are achieving those goals. And you will only know that if you're, if there's a, um, consistent monitoring, you know?
Yes, sir.
Have y'all purchased the materials yet?
No, we have not. We were waiting to get approval beforehand, because there was no point in buying anything.
Well, y'all approved it. I'll fund it for you guys.
So, that would be amazing.
Yeah.
That'd be amazing.
You just let me know, which will put y'all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hence the reason why we haven't bought anything yet, because there was no sense in putting the money into it, unfortunately, if there was no place to put it, so.
Just, y'all let me know whenever it's time. Well, I guess we got it.
Yes, sir.
It's not for the car before. I would like to make a motion.
Make that and vote.
That we approve, uh, that we allow Milford F F A to build a free pantry and library for the community.
I see.
With, uh, I, I guess, with the only stipulation would be as far as the location. And that doesn't really matter to me, I guess, whatever's, I would say whatever's most convenient to the city.
Those were our three choices, unless you folks have an additional option, something that's, again, like you said, that is extremely visible, available, you know?
The only thing I would say in my consideration of the location would be to be able to allow people to be able to park.
Yes, that was the other reason why I chose this.
And be able to not be necessarily in the middle of seventy-seven going down the highway if they were parking.
Yeah, we were trying to find places. I know they have, like, the vertical, the diagonal parking here.
Yeah, but which would make a lot of sense to me.
Yes, sir.
Right, so that would be my, I don't know.
I think we figured that out.
We figured it out.
Location's fine.
And you all have a tracking system? Are you, you're developing a tracking system?
Yes, ma'am.
You're developing that, okay. All right. We, we're with you.
Okay, I made the motion.
I second.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most encouraged? Thank y'all for. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Very good.
Interest in the community.
Look at the future of Milford. Look at the leaders. Good job, young people. Good job, teacher.
We got to go to our own meeting now, too.
Great job. Keep leading forward. Makes me so proud.
Thank you very much for coming. Thanks so much for coming.
All right, thank you. All right, great job, young people.
Good one.
Great job.
Yeah.
Great job.
Yeah, please.
Because we, we have one set of kids for planners, and then we had another set of kids that are doing the building.
Yeah, just have Kim, talk to Kim. She, you have to give them some, somebody can come up.
Okay, that's, that's perfect. Thank you so much.
No worries.
Number six, discussing possible action, approve final plaque for the main addition lots one and two. Point three two five acres situated in the Elsley Dunigan Survey Abstract, number three oh one, City of Milford, Ellis County, Texas. This is on, uh, Main Street, South Main, on the east side, right? Mr. Davenport. I think we got everything in order. We checked on this to see whether there was a gas line in, uh, through the property, and we confirmed that there's not one, so.
Where is this?
Right down here on South Main. That, the, the Dark, people named Dark, Murphy used to own some of that.
Right, uh, probably owned adjacent.
Okay.
Sorry, Jason.
Okay. That's before you get to, uh, three oh eight.
And, uh, was it Dixie?
Yes.
Yes.
The map's in here, and, uh, Kim told me that Mr. Martin did look, look at it and signed off on it, although we didn't get his letter saying so, but it's here, and we have looked at it before, so. So, all we're doing is pretty much. We withheld approval because we were looking to make sure there was a sewer line there, and we confirmed that there's not.
We're good?
All right, I'll make.
I think we're good to go. Davenport was to build, right?
My son does.
Okay.
I'm getting, getting up in the ears where I'm at.
Yeah, I understand. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve final plaque for the main addition lots one and two. Three point three two five acres situated in the Elsley Dunigan Survey Abstract, number three oh one, City of Milford, Ellis County, Texas.
I second.
And a motion second to accept a final plaque for the main addition lots one and two. And set forth in the motion and on our agenda. Any further discussion? Not? All those say, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. And that's approved, so. We go to number seven, discussing possible action on garbage rates for residential and commercial businesses.
I wanted to go over some of these, well, commercial and residential. Since our rates have been really steady, but since two thousand and twenty-one, there has been no increase. Comes forefront, though, that we are just about losing money on this deal, on the commercial part. And on the residential part. As far as what the rates are from D C I now compared to what it's costing the city as far as labor and, and stuff like that, as far as paperwork. You know, so we need to think about going up on the rates. As far as the residential is eighteen fifty. I wanted to know from the rest of the council what you all would think would be a, a good increase. Because I checked on, uh, other cities' rates as far as a, a two yard, or two yard dumpster is, D C I's charging eighty-five. And, uh, you know, we're only charging ninety, right? No, that's what, that's what the resident is, ninety. And, uh, a lot of cities that I checked, small cities like we have now, are at around ninety-two and a half to up to ninety-six dollars. On a two yard bin. And, uh, trash collection, we're at eighteen fifty, and a lot of people, cities our size are at, at around twenty to twenty-one dollars. And a six, a six yard dumpster, which Roadrunner has up there, they have four of them. And, uh, they dump their four every day for five day, uh, five days out of the week. Every day, they get dumped. So, there's four six yarders up there. And I checked a couple cities again about this, too. And the average price is right around a hundred and sixty-eight to a hundred and seventy-four dollars. And, uh, right now, we're, we're, we're getting charged a hundred and forty dollars from D C I. Which ends up being only, we're only making like five to eight dollars, I think, on each, each dumpster. And again, you figure in, you know, labor and that, and paper, and, you know, and hourly wage. That needs to increase some, too. Again, if the council, of course, to figure out what kind of rate we want to go to, or if we want to go to a percentage of what you would think on the residential and on the commercial part of it.
I, I have a question. When you say, okay, D C I will charge for a six yard, it's a hundred and forty dollars, what, what is that cover? What is that? Is that just for the pickup?
That's just for.
Dumping it?
Dumping. It's not for dumping it, it's just the dumpster.
The, that we?
They, they charge a hundred and forty dollars for the dumpster, the rates.
Okay.
So, they got four, four of them up there. So, six times four, twenty-four, which you go here, a hundred and forty. But that's what they charge.
Okay, no.
And then the, but the city's the one that charges, uh, Roadrunner up here.
Okay. But, okay, for this res, resident customer charge, okay, for.
That's ninety dollars for a dumpster.
What, when you say dumpsters, that's our trash can?
Trash, or, or, no.
No, just the business.
The bigger dumps.
Commercial.
Commercial, yes.
Okay, but what's this?
If a resident wants one.
Oh, okay, okay. I wasn't understanding what we were talking about. Okay.
You know, they got different prices.
Yes, I see that. Okay. Okay.
But, uh, like I said, I talked to Kim about it, you know? I said it only comes out to eight to ten dollars on each dumpster. And, and we're doing the legwork on the billing and? You know? So? That's something we have to come up with, is how far do we wanna go up on? On, uh, on the residence and on the commercial end of it.
So right now, per customer, we're at twelve oh five? A month?
Yes, of what the city gets charged from DCI.
Okay, and we are billing customers at twenty?
Eighteen, eighteen fifty.
Eighteen fifty.
But in that, you know, there's taxes and?
No, I understand.
And, you know?
So, and then the six yards? Like we have, like I have right now, or?
You got a six yard?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, we're getting that billed at a hundred and forty? And you're saying that we're built, we're able to, you think probably go to a one seventy, one seventy-five?
Well? Uh, what did I say? One sixty.
One sixty-eight to one seventy-four, yeah.
Okay, so let's call it. Okay, so that's thirty. And then per customer, we're going up, we would go up? The, per customer at eighteen fifty on the, on the places that you've seen are at anywhere from?
Up to twenty dollars to twenty-two.
Okay.
But?
Okay, so that would be a three to four dollar increase or something around there?
Two to, two to four.
Okay. And those are really the major? Those are the major bills right now, right?
Right now.
Because we don't really have a whole lot of other? People using.
The, uh, dumpsters.
Right, and we don't have any recycle and we don't have?
Yeah, I see that, is that recyclables?
I, I, that's what it looks like, yeah, but I was wondering where they were coming up with that one.
I didn't think they did that anymore.
We don't. And they wouldn't, oh, the city has recycled them?
Yeah, well, it's for the city, it's a big dumpster.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Because right now? It ends up being seven hundred dollars a week for Roadrunner. You know, as far as what it's costing. And it's, you know, it's sort of, you know?
Yeah, I, I mean, if Roadrunners, I guess? I'm just trying to put it into, to comprehensible numbers, I guess. If, if Roadrunner is getting it picked up that often, I would think that they should have to? Pay a supplemental fee for that. I mean, if you're getting your trash picked up once a week, like normal?
Yeah.
Circumstances, I would think that you would pay whatever your rate is, but if you're getting it daily, I would think that you would need to increase that.
Well, from what Kim told me, you know, they wanted eight yard bins, but? DCI don't have them, they don't carry them. So they, you know, they're on the six yarders right now, so?
Okay.
But they get dumped every day, you know, at least five days out of the week.
But they're getting billed? That rate, they're getting billed for six on every month. Or six every week is what twenty-eight hundred dollars comes out to. That's seven hundred times four.
Yeah, yeah. Seven hundred times four.
Which would be each one of their four bins getting picked up once a week, right? That's six hundred plus tax, that's, that's, that's.
Yeah.
I don't know how they got to their twenty-eight hundred dollars, I guess.
Well, it's, yeah. But for a day.
Well, yeah, but they're getting, they're getting that billed on a weekly basis, not on a monthly.
Yeah. No, monthly basis.
Right, it's twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Yes, total.
Right, yeah. So that would be, I guess, them getting billed for four trash cans once a week is all that stuff.
Yeah.
Um, or every, every day.
I was thinking?
Um, well, I think? Yeah, I, I mean, I, I definitely think if Road Ranger is skewing the numbers by an astronomical amount, then we need to probably figure out something to do with that. I think that the people who, if we're looking at the rest of our? Constituents and people that live in town? I think going up by twenty percent is a bit of a?
Oh, I know, hike, I was thinking maybe ten percent or? Or, or between ten and fifteen.
Do we have any? Private residence dumpsters there are in the city?
Three fifty, somewhere around whatever the major number is, right, would have to be what it is. Right, uh, I mean, uh, ballpark, I would not give it a ton more than that. So, somewhere in the three fifty range, I believe that.
No, not for the dumpster.
No, 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 for, per, use that, how many people?
I'm talking about?
I'm talking about these dumpsters, these?
Oh, oh, the name ones?
The ones, uh-huh.
Oh, no, I.
No, nobody was two and five.
Me and therefore?
Oh, the school.
The school, I guess.
School got about five, maybe six.
There's not, we're?
But I don't think they give them dumped every day though. The school though.
It's just, yeah.
It's just once a week.
Weekly, yeah.
Mm-hmm, that's when I got so many.
Okay.
I gue, I guess I was looking at the number for what we're going to be increasing the individuals going to be the biggest concern for the city, the world, right?
Like I said, we've? They went up on us a couple of times already, well, uh, DCI, I think twice now since two thousand twenty-one. And with, you know, fuel and that, I'm sure it'll go up this October again, but hopefully not, you know?
Right.
But I was thinking in the ten to fifteen percent, you know? Which would be above eighty or? Two dollars, you know? It don't seem like a lot what it is, you know?
Right. That's eighteen fifty per customer.
Yeah.
Now?
Yeah.
So if we were to take it to twenty? Dollar fifty on three? It's giving you an extra? Four hundred and fif, five hundred bucks? A week? Or no? What?
That's not a lot. Do we have any outside trash being picked up outside of city limits?
No.
No.
They did, go ahead, Carla.
Oh, mine does.
Well, we better go. Lot.
Does the, do they have them, do they have one out on?
There's, there's several, basically whoever has city water also has city trash picked up. And I would say there's gonna be ten, twelve of those? Or maybe a lot of individuals. Oh no, there's only two, I think. But? My thing is, is? Just my opinion, if you're gonna go up, somebody needs to be able to police DCI a little bit better because? Every day after they run, I gotta go clean up trash. Last week they left two trash bags going up the middle of the road. I mean, how do they fall off of the trash truck?
It's, it's, it's changed since, so.
I know.
Yeah.
Cause before I would've just called the owner and said, hey?
Yeah.
When's this contract with DCI up also?
He needed every October or is it?
Well, she thought it was up this last October, but she looked at it right and I think it's another five years.
Oh, in five years?
Who put it like that?
She said it's another five.
Oh, okay.
Another five years locked at a number or does their number increases on a yearly?
Uh, I'm not sure about that, but we have to stay, I mean, all the contracts state so we have to stay with them for another, I think it was a total of ten years. It's just this October marked a five.
That's fine.
I guess they thought Ricky was gonna keep it that long, but he didn't.
Well, the alternatives were a lot more expensive.
Yeah.
Probably still are. I think we got a good start on this, maybe we oughta?
Yeah.
See? Study a little more between now and our next meeting and?
Yeah.
Get some firm numbers.
Yeah, just to be able to discuss with Kim.
Right.
Get Kim's input as well.
Oh, yeah, I.
Right, she's sick.
Yeah.
But yeah, I, I understand, oh yeah, I agree.
I do understand where you're coming from and I do, I, I, you know? If it's gonna be able to help out the city, I can, I, I do? Get the need for the hike, but?
Yeah, well, we'll get with Kim. Get something finalized for the next meeting.
First week, so?
Y'all just passed that one.
Yeah.
All right, we can go to? Number eight, there's no need to bring that one up because the? We got that property mode this, this weekend, so it looks good now. I think it's in compliance. Number nine, discussing possible action, amend ordinance three four seven dash one eight. Subdivision ordinance by requiring proposed preliminary final class? Being compliance with City of Milford prior to review and approval. Uh, that should read? You know, that the properties to be in? I mean, when I say plats, I meant the?
Property itself.
Property itself being? In compliance with our ordinances prior to review and approvals, if we prove it, it'll be Article nine dash nine of three seven four. Three four seven dash one eight. And, uh?
What?
I propose, well, this is not any particular property, it's just, what it's saying is if? If someone wants us to approve a subdivision plant, they need to have their property mode in? In, or, in compliance with our ordinances before we start reviewing it.
Okay.
Uh, for future? Development, uh, I don't think it's shit that's in? Property to? You know, have property that's overgrown or, or not in compliance in some way and then they're asking us to? Do something for them. And, uh, spend our time reviewing, uh, reviewing plats.
Okay.
And, uh, it can be easily enforced when, when we do get a? Plat, uh? Proposal, we just have our? Building inspector and code enforcer to look the property over and see if there's any, any violations there. I mean, it could be a lot of things, there'll be a well that's exposed or? Could be some, some, some other things.
Was Mr. Bolz, did you do that kind of stuff? Have you got him talking to you?
What do you mean?
Bolz?
Oh, all right, he's not talking about Bolz, he's talking about Mark. No.
Or Mark.
Yeah, yeah, he'll, if he doesn't do it, we'll find someone else, we'll authorize someone else to do it. But I just don't think it, it's anything that's gonna, it'll cost us anything, it's not gonna delay any projects, just, just a simple once-over.
And it keeps the city looking better for overall, it's going to?
Right.
In the long run, that's what it's going to reinforce, is making the city? Look better. I'm good with it.
Yeah.
So, so Mark, Mark, uh, with, what's his name, H.L. Markham? So he will assume the responsibility for all, uh? Pardon it, six point one zero four, like if there's rubbish, trash and debris, if there, if there are, uh? Furnishings that are intended for interior use outside of the homes as well as grass, grass that's overgrown? He's going to be the one to? Enforce that or not?
If that exists on this, you know, when someone? Has a subdivision?
But that's just, that's the price to save.
Other than that, we're talking about, what you're talking about is general enforcement, we're not talking about that tonight.
All right.
I'm not sure how we're gonna handle that yet.
Okay.
That's something we might need to?
I would like to?
Think about it on our next, at our next meeting.
Yes, please.
Sorry, I was just gonna, go ahead, get it done. Yeah. Uh, I would like to make a motion to amend ordinance three four seven dash one eight subdivision ordinance by requiring the proposed preliminary and? The property itself? Just not wanna read, but? To be in compliance with City of Milford ordinances prior to review and approval. Proposed Article nine dash nine.
I'll second it.
Motion's second. Do we have any further discussion? Not, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and, uh, or, or this three four seven dash one eight is amended. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.